So, welcome to our special board meeting. As part of the agenda, there is not a public forum listed because we do have a community forum tomorrow that we anticipate there'll be a lot of questions and comments around that part. So, this meeting will have some brief business and then the board will be going into executive session to discuss some other issues. In attendance, so I'll call the meeting to order 6:39 to be exact. At this point, we have President, Mr. Mann, Beuth, Skurten, Taylor, myself, Mr. Dunn, is Michelle Skamursky out there or is she coming in?
I believe she's excused from the meeting. She requested the excuse for the meeting.
She's excused from the meeting.
She's out of town.
Okay, so she's not in attendance. And Ms. Massey has a work commitment. She was hoping to join us shortly. So, that should be everybody. With that, we'll now move to the pledge of allegiance. Please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, not under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So, first order of business is board forum and superintendent report and like indicated, the email is open.
Yes.
That typically that the board has for the public comment when we're virtual. And that still is available to send in comments as you view the board meeting, but we're not having a specific section of reading those emails. We will answer any questions that come in tonight as part of the community forum that is scheduled for tomorrow.
Yes.
If we do get some that pop up and we feel that it's necessary to read them, we can go ahead and do that if that's okay with the board members.
So far, we haven't received any public comment.
No public comment. Okay, so, we do have that available as the email. I know we had some issues with the live stream. Hopefully, folks have been able to log back on with the EG stream to view the board meeting. With that, part of the board forum, I will just go around to my colleagues and see if there's any comments at this point and we'll start with on my right with Joanne. No comments, okay. Kathleen?
Nothing here.
Deanna, you're good. Mark?
None at this time.
Nothing at this time. John, do you have anything out there? You're good, thumbs up, okay. All right. I know everyone's been working hard around the reopening plans and the challenges and issues, governor's announcement that came out. Part of our having a public meeting tonight is to discuss the superintendent later on some things that are happening in terms of the reopening, but also to make sure that people understand the district is heavily involved and engaging with the community to and our parents and staff to make sure that they get the information they need. Our plans are posted with both the education department and department of health. So, those things are in place at this point and we'll just proceed from there. We have our community forums scheduled over the next week and next week and hopefully people can tune in to make sure that they get the information they need to hear about how the school is scheduled to reopen. With that, I did want to talk a little bit with the board as our discussion items unless you have Mr. Simons, do you have anything for?
No, not at this time.
Okay. As we posted a little over two weeks ago now, there is a board vacancy. So far, the process has been to post the vacancy. We do have eight folks who came forward and I just want to say Jen Massey, our other board member, has just joined us. Welcome, Jen. So, that was that acceptance of resumes and letters of interest from candidates, the deadline was Monday. We did receive eight inquiries, letters and resumes, interest for the board. And I did put those, put those together for me in a hard copy, but I did put them in a Google Drive and I'll be sharing those out to the board. The next thing we need to talk about is really a timeline. You know, our next board meeting is the 19th, so really not feasible to get interviews and things done at that point. But as far as process, I'd like to do is shoot for September 9th to at least get someone, hopefully get someone appointed if time allows and we can get the interviews done. But as far as the candidates, I'll send those out to the board members. I'd like you to review those and then we'll talk about a process. With eight people, that's quite a few. That would mean a commitment of time. I suggest that we screen those and then either select or decide if we want to interview all if they're all feasible candidates that we think would be someone we can move forward with. So, I'd just like to hear your thoughts about with that kind of number, people's availability over the next couple of weeks, probably evenings, couple of evenings, and then scheduling those. So, anyone else to throw it out to the board at this point? Any comments? Nothing? No? You're available. Folks are gonna are available, any vacations planned or being away or not a lot of people to go without having any comments. John?
Mike, I'll make myself available.
Thank you, John. And you know, if we have to do remote, I have a little bit of experience in doing Zoom interviews too, so that's always feasible. I know Chris is probably nodding your head over here saying, yep.
Zoom works very well for me, Mike.
Okay, that worked well for you, good. So, if I'll share those with the board. We'll come up with some dates. I have a timeline put together. I'll send that out to the board and to the superintendent and then we'll schedule. Is there certain evenings that are best for people that you'd like to stay away from? Like that are an issue? We're all just don't have anything to do with? You good, Judy?
Mike? Thursdays aren't good days.
Thursdays are no good?
Yeah.
John?
I'll make myself available. We'll show initially some flexibility to the potential candidates.
Yep.
So, we can lure them in.
Of course. I get the metaphor, John. So, try to stay away from Thursdays, any other days that wouldn't be good. Obviously, Fridays is not good for me. So, Monday through Wednesday, we'll shoot for over the next couple of weeks and I'll get some dates together. Like I said, let's, I'll get those out to the board, the resumes and letters of interest and then take a look, some familiar names in there and we can talk about that. And we also have the forum, 19th is a board meeting, so the...
There's a forum on the 13th, the 18th, and a board meeting on the 19th. There's two forums coming.
19th, 18th, and Thursday, so it's probably gonna be the following. We're always getting into the end of August, so I think I anticipated that end of August probably better, maybe even, you know, then we're getting to Labor Day weekend. So, we'll try to make ourselves available as best we can. So, I'm thinking the, the week of the 24th is probably gonna be the time we're gonna do this. It'll be on Monday, Tuesday, or Tuesday, Wednesday, Monday, Wednesday, whatever works out to me. Okay. That's a lot of people if we do all eight, all right? Any other comments about that? Again, I'll email the link out to everybody and you can view those. All right. That's all I had on the board vacancy. Mr. Simons, the CHS credits for seniors, Mike Harkin, is he out there?
I believe Mr. Harkin is out there. Mr. Harkin, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone.
Mr. Harkin has requested a revision or a suspension of the board's policy and we thought we would discuss it with the board. Although the board did grant me the approval of a resolution at the last meeting to steer from policy when necessary to reopen, this is a particular unique request because we've been emphasizing over the course of the last several years, encouraging our seniors to take a full schedule of courses. However, some of the variables involved in opening include consideration of hundreds of students who will need remote courses. Mr. Harkin is requesting that the requirement for students to have, be taking five and a half credits to be determined to be a senior be waived. This would only affect certain students who are eligible to graduate this year and it would enable some flexibility within the schedule, reducing the overall number of students that need to be scheduled and potentially have the ability for us to assign some of our current staff to remote classes to accommodate those remote, those remote students. Mr. Harkin, can you give us a little bit more of the particulars on how this might impact your schedule for this year?
Yeah, we're hoping to, we'll sit down with counselors if this goes through and look at the student schedules and see who would be eligible to take classes and it will free us up and hopefully give teachers an option to be able to do a remote class or have reduced course load where we can do some other assignments with them and cover them for some other remote options that we have in mind that Mr. Simons and I have discussed. So, this would just free up some of our current staff right now and allow students to get done in the earlier and it'll just reduce the total number of people in the building also.
Do you have any idea approximately, an estimate of how many students would be impacted by this who don't need five and a half credits to graduate this year, approximately?
I would think we would have somewhere between 50 to 75. We have a lot of students right now that already have between 19 and 22 credits as they enter their senior year. We have about 100 of those kids right now, but I don't think all of them would want to take part in this, but we will offer it to anyone that's interested.
Thank you.
Any feedback for Mr. Harkin regarding the changes?
What is the number of students that you would need to, to make it feasible? If you're gonna offer it in three say yes and the rest say no, you know, what is the, how is that gonna help? I mean, there's gotta be a number that you're, you're looking at to say it's gonna work if we get this many students to, to opt in.
Yeah, that's a good question. I think we need somewhere between 25 and 30 to opt in in order to reduce the section. So, we would have to obviously start making those phone calls right now with our counselors and the counselors will be in full time shortly, so we're planning on doing that.
We have about 113 high school students right now. It's a different number, but 113 high school students whose parents have requested a full remote option. So, there's the number of children that potentially would not be scheduled in the classes around 25 and there's 113 students who need a full remote schedule.
At the high school?
At the high school alone.
Seniors?
No, seven through 12. I don't know the breakdown of the seniors. I don't have that on my sheet, but I do have that in my office, but there's 113 total, seven, excuse me, seven through 12, not nine through 12.
So, roughly 25 to 30 students to make it feasible to do so?
Yes. Any other comments? Does that answer? Want any more information, Mark?
So, if, if...
If we don't get the number?
If 10 opt out, or say 25 opt out and 30 don't, I'm just trying to see the equity in that if, you know, you're saying to 25 kids, yeah, okay, you don't have to, but then the other 30 say, no, I want to go to school and their parents want to come to school. Is it gonna affect, you know, their diplomas, whether, you know, I just don't see, I don't see the equity in it.
I think it's reverting back to some degree to the permitting students to early, 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 what's the word I'm looking for, early, early release.
Early release or late arrival.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, the other thing that we were going to mention, some of these students and some of our advanced students that we know want to already attend Hudson Valley, we have met with them last week and they're looking to offer math and science classes in the second semester as they are highly transferable. So, we will have that discussion as well. So, we're not just trying to get kids to take, you know, the three or four credits necessary to graduate. We want to try to get them advanced. I've already had three seniors already apply, apply for January graduation, so that'll be coming up to Mr. McHugh's office shortly for the same aspect. They feel that they're afraid there won't be the same senior year or senior year similar to the students from 2020 and they want to get moving on with their lives. So, we were gonna have those discussions as well. We're not just trying to, you know, reduce somebody so we can have extra space or extra classes. We want to try to help forward their lives and get them prepared for the next phase of their life.
I'd be, I'd like to see the numbers.
Sure.
Sure.
The, there's a lot of fluidity right now regarding the master's schedule because of the remote numbers keep increasing, but we can definitely do that. It's some of the scheduling challenges related to remote instruction and some of the potential collective bargaining issues regarding that, we're gonna have to have, we're the discussions of.
Do you need any decisions from us tonight at this point?
No, I just want, again, it was more information to make the board aware. And, you know, we'll bring back a report on how that worked out in terms of the numbers.
Mike, just a quick comment if I could?
Sure.
Again, to Mike Harkin and Jeff, thank you for looking into ways to solve a lot of the challenges and problems that we have going forward. I am very comfortable with the recommendations that you guys bring forward and what is in the best needs of the students that you're presented with at that time. I'm looking forward to seeing how this shakes out because there's gonna, we're gonna need a lot of out of the box thinking for a lot of different kids and problems that come up. So, you have my support in moving this type of thinking forward. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Anyone else's comments? I think generally their support for it, I think we just need some more information about what the impact could be.
Very good. We will. Thank you.
Yep. All right, moving to regular business. Thanks, Mr. Harkin. First thing we have on regular business is purchasing and cleaning and disinfecting equipment. Anything you want to discuss there?
Yes, in order, in order to ensure we can meet all of the health and safety requirements, particularly in the area of cleaning and disinfecting, we have worked with Mrs. Wagler, our director of business and finance, to identify monies within the existing budget that could be transferred into equipment to make these purchases. There are some right now in the district, some of the misters as well as the generators. I think we have two or three, two currently, but these pieces of equipment necessary for both the disinfecting of the buses, which is, will occur daily, the cleaning occurs in between runs, and to do the necessary disinfecting in all of the buildings, which would include all of the spaces, not necessarily the cleaning, but the disinfecting. There's a generator that mixes the chemicals that are utilized in addition to the mister and I'm gonna turn it over to Linda to break down the costs and where the money is coming These reduce the need to, we're already going to be hiring a number of substitutes to clean in the evenings. We're also going to be incurring overtime costs for the custodial staff. This reduces some of the manpower necessary to do the disinfecting.
Thank you, Mr. Simons. The $22,000, I'm looking for approval of a budget transfer into the equipment code to take care of this and it would cover, the units are approximately $1,500 apiece and we're getting somewhere 14, 15 units. So, as Mr. Simon said, this will be, these will be used daily in the buildings to disinfect. The custodians will maintain their regular maintenance schedule and the disinfecting will be done after that.
Any questions for Linda regarding the budget transfer or the equipment? So, we already have a couple of these now or one of these now?
I think we have two now.
Currently have two.
Two and this would purchase how many more?
15.
Okay. All right. And this is pretty common, I think, getting these in the evenings, misting down the, and fogging the buildings. It's a good way to reduce the contamination or anything like that. Okay. All right. Any questions on that? If not, any motion to approve the budget transfer for those items? Kathleen, second. Joanne, all those in favor? Approved.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we'll move to purchasing Chromebook tablets. I know we talked about providing devices to all our children in the district and it looks like these will be for our K1 students and they're actually tablets.
Yes, I'm gonna, I'm gonna defer to Mr. Goodwin in just a minute. However, in our plans to the state, we are required to ensure that every child has access to the curriculum through digital resources, particularly in the event that we have to go to a full remote for the district. Our Lighthouse one-to-one program started a few years ago, purchased devices for every child, third grade through senior year. Last year, with some of the smart schools monies during the spring, we purchased for second grade. We did not have devices for K1. These devices are particularly, and Mr. Goodwin's estimate, better for the little ones and I'm gonna ask Mr. Goodwin to explain what they are. They will also be helpful after the COVID-19 pandemic because they could be used in the classroom with the teachers and the kids. So, it's a, it's not a temporary expense, it's something that would be sustainable, at least until the lifetime of the tablets themselves.
Okay, so, Mr. Goodwin has joined us and he's gonna talk a little about the Chromebook tablets.
Yes, thank you. So, what we are purchasing for the grade two and grade K through two are Acer Chrome Tabs, which are Chromebooks fully, but they are also tablets. They come with the little stylus. I have a couple of them here tonight if the board would like to look at them. Looking at our numbers, we have kindergarten, we have rejected through our 304, first grade 311, so there's a purchase that we did to cover that, that's a little extra. And grade two, we also have about 294 coming up, I believe, and so, we've purchased adequate supply to do that.
There was some discussions with Mr. Goodwin, Ms. Wagler and myself about utilizing existing monies within the budget, offsetting that with some transfers and we are making the purchase through BOSI's and so the entire expense of the is reimbursable. So, the cost, I want Ms. Wagler to talk about the cost in this current year, but the net cost when we apply the BOSI's aid, because we're purchasing these through Questar next year, it's a significant reduction of almost 50%.
Thank you. In order to purchase the 650 Chrome Tabs and their licenses, it's going to cost approximately $165,000 and that includes an 8% BOSI's administrative fee. However, next year in the 2021, 2022 school year, we'll receive BOSI's aid on that amounting to over $93,000. So, the net cost to the district is just over $72,000.
And Peter, what's the, the life cycle of these devices?
About three years.
Three years, okay. That's not bad. I think the, any questions for Peter? You guys get to play with them a little bit?
Yeah, it's pretty fun.
I think that's a really great idea because a lot of our younger students are so used to either an iPad, a tablet form and swiping and using things with their fingers and the kind of more sensory pieces and I think that keying things in, logging in, that kind of stuff is much more challenging, it seemed like. So, I think using the tablets is a great idea and I think, figure about 250 or 280 bucks a tablet and we get reimbursed about what, you said 93,000?
It'll be about 93,000 altogether.
Okay.
About 61%.
And with the life cycle and what about, is the same kind of terms, Peter, as the Chromebooks, in terms of how the parents would deal with issues with Chromebooks and...
Yes. Obviously, they're enterprise, so we have to separate.
Yep.
Basically, we hope to use it with the package.
Okay.
For K2, which we're hoping, right in our patients, you can hold it for three.
Okay.
Just one of the key features, so you know, the Seesaw package is it will allow kids to sort of, I think, picture with the group.
Oh, neat.
And then it goes to the teacher and any of the, that was a key feature for writing for...
Okay.
So, it pays for a nice chain of dad's trunks happening for your classroom or at home.
Great. And I know that in my house, we drop our tablets a lot and they can crack. What safety features yet? Are they coming with some kind of a nice cover so if they drop?
The cover for kindergarten, they were purchased at separate times.
Okay.
And we just went with it.
So, the cover for kindergarten was purchased at a different time and they came free with the unit. So, they're sort of like this hardcover here.
Yep, yep.
And then for the latest purchase, thank you, this is a Melken case, also came free.
Okay.
And they actually provided some extra for us. So, that would go right in there. My experience has been with the Chromebooks that we have, even although I had those great looking and really nice cases.
Yep.
I can't say that I agree that they're worth the money because I still replace about 100 screens a year anyway.
Okay.
So, I can't really say that they prevented any breakage.
Gotcha. All right. Just want to make sure that they last a little longer than, get some life cycle out of them because I think kids can be tough on those things, that's for sure. All right, well, thank you. So, any other questions for, for Peter or Mr. Simons regarding the purchase or Linda? No? All right, I need a motion to approve the budget transfer for that. Mark, second. Deanna, all those in favor? John, good? Jennifer, good? All right, thank you, approved. Going to the next item of regular business, we have the school calendar, which I know that's been something we've, you know, heard in the news and different things around school calendar, so I'll turn this over to Mr. Simons to give us a little update on what's going on with the school calendar.
Many school districts have been discussing the need for ensuring preparation and training for our staff as they come back in September. The complexities of reopening in terms of the procedures that everyone will have to follow regarding health and safety, the acclamation of the staff to assignments that will involve health and safety, on top of the mandated training that we need to do on a regular basis and the fact that we are recommending a model which will require the teachers to teach differently and to ensure that they are both familiar with the curriculum design, they've had time to collaborate with one another and that they have the familiarity with the technology tools that we've added. All of that requires sufficient time and having our staff together, either virtually or in person. So, we've talked about this extension of the calendar for the student's start time, start day from September 8th to the 14th. So, students would start on the 14th should the board approve the calendar change. It will not alter in any way the work schedule of our employees. They would still return to work, I believe it's August 31st. They would continue to work on those days between September, school days between September 8th and the 14th to prepare for the opening. And Mr. McHugh and several stakeholders are involved in discussing what that, what those days would look like. So, Mr. McHugh, if you want to fill in some of the discussions that are occurring right now for the staff days. Do you want to talk a little bit about the staff days between September 8th and the 14th?
Sure. Last spring, we already had planned some full days of professional development that were on, we were unable to still hold. So, right now, you look at September 2nd and September 3rd, which are professional development days, which are already filled. So, on top of the challenge of coming in and trying to plan a cohesive week of instruction, regardless of the format that we're in, if we are in a hybrid format where it's a blend of in-person and remote, teachers really need that professional time to really develop and think out their instructional plan. So, we want to utilize those days, K through 12, for teachers to get together, share best practices, talk about a strategic approach. We also want to see that consistency. So, when we talk about our elementary buildings, five buildings, we want what's going on in the first grade in one of our elementary buildings to be the same instructional delivery plan in all of our elementary buildings. So, that takes time. There are a lot of new components such as Seesaw that we want to add in, especially for our K2 population and our art teachers would also utilize that resource. Those folks need time to interact with that software and to plan so that we maximize the effectiveness of, of those tech supports that we have in place. So, we could put those four days to very good use.
Question, students, what will they be doing in that time? Would there be any student virtual instruction, anything going on that, that way for students?
Not on those four days. The first day of instruction for students would be September 14th.
Okay, so, basically extended vacation for a different...
Correct.
Okay. Will that impact any other instructional days throughout the calendar year at this point and will we, there's no, is there a...
No, that, that is another good point. Once we, once we see September 2nd and September 3rd as professional development days, there are only two half-days in that... there are only two half days in that academic calendar, professional development for the remainder of the year. So that time is really critical. It's important that we start off putting our best foot forward and making sure that folks are prepared to change that instructional design.
Great. Questions for Jim or?
Actually, my question is for Jeff. What is that going to do with state aid? Because aren't we going to lose out on four days of state aid?
180-day requirement was waived and approved by the Board of Regents just prior to the rollout of the guidelines. So we are not subject to that. We have flexibility. We do have to make sure that student attendance is monitored. And we do have to make sure that we're teaching to the standards, but we have flexibility as to when we start and how we operate our schedule.
One question came back to me about the devices. Mr. Goodwin would be distribution of those devices as far as in preparation for students. Do you know that, Jim?
Well, we're still waiting for delivery for some of those devices. So we were promised mid to late August and everybody is scrambling for those devices currently. So we were notified that it's going to be a little later. So
Okay, okay.
We're really at the mercy of that delivery.
Delivery. So just so parents are informed that, I guess this helps support the fact that to get those devices in parents and kids' hands, there's some time for that. And like everything is on backorder probably. So a lot of demand for things. Any questions regarding the calendar? I think this is a a smart move in terms of making sure that our staff have the PD and also to make sure that as we put the protocols and procedures in place, they walk through the buildings, they get a sense they're back at school. It's been a long time since people have been in the building in a, in a larger sense. And I think this will help to kind of walk through what's happening, what our plans are, kind of do some dry runs and work collaborate as staff to work on those things that Mr. McHugh talked about for our students to make sure we can deliver instruction properly and do things safe.
Thank you.
You need a motion to approve the calendar?
Yes.
All right, I need a motion to approve the calendar. Joanne, second. Deanna, all those in favor? John and Joanne, good? Jennifer, good?
I appreciate the board's support for the change. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. So how many districts we think will be kind of doing this right now? It sounds like it's more and more.
I think the majority of the districts in our area, Questar area, will be doing something similar. Yes.
We don't have any other regular business, any old business board members you want to bring forward? Well, it's not on the agenda, but opportunity to do that now? Okay, so seeing none, any emails come in, Mr. Simons at all? Can you access it or is it?
I have not been able to see any emails and I hopefully I am accessing it correctly. In the event that I'm not. I just refreshing, I see no emails in the public comment.
Okay. And like I said earlier in the meeting, we do have the community forum all set up for tomorrow for staff to, and I'm sorry, for parents and community members to submit questions and hear the presentation. So with that, we do have need for executive session for purposes of proposed lease and for discussion of collective negotiations. I need a motion to move into executive session. Kathleen, in the second. Deanna, all those in favor? So thank you, everybody. Now we're going to do the same thing we do before, Peter. We're going to do a separate link. You need some time to set that up or? Just Mr. Dunn and Jennifer, you're still able to join us? Yep. So Ms. Massey and Mr. Dunn. Thank you. Okay, good night, everybody. Executive session. So have a great night. Thanks for joining us.